Two, one. Hey Doc Rich, you have the floor.
Updates on Omicron variant by Dr. Rich Born Camino, Philippine Red Cross consultant, U P College of Medicine and T R M F graduate, differently known author of Ayurang to Live and Not Nearly to Exist, Philippine Red Cross Town Hall meeting the second of December sixteenth, three to five P M. A reference to last week's lecture on November twenty fourth two thousand twenty one, the fear unfolded before our eyes with the emergence of another variant, variant O or Omicron which emerged in South Africa. In the last seven eight weeks prior, there was a surge of C O V I D nineteen case in South Africa. After scientists in South Africa detected a new coronavirus variant, the country reported a rise in infections with the positivity rate jumping from the seven day average of four point three percent to nine point one percent on Friday evening, health authorities said. Source C O V I D nineteen cases spike in South Africa as new variant raises alarm by Hassan is low November twenty seventh two thousand twenty one A A dot com. Countries detecting the Omicron variant are increasing by the day. Latest figures show no less than thirty five countries have recorded a COVID infection by the fifth variant of concern. Four of them belong to the Western Pacific region, Australia, Hong Kong, Japan, and the Republic of Korea. But the World Health Organization thinks the variant is already spreading in other countries.
The number of countries with Omicron circulates in the West Pacific uh is already likely to be much higher than this and as we are seeing an increasing number of reports globally, uh uh we may may also see an increase in the number of countries that reported over time.
While current measures are still seen to be effective in responding to the pandemic, the W H O says available information suggests that the Omicron variant is more transmissible.
The data suggests that potentially higher transmissibility. So what is very important is to prepare and be ready for this uh next surge.
Fourteen countries are currently in the Philippines red list. But the W H O says travel restrictions will not prevent but only delay the entry of Omicron.
It's not possible to completely stop the virus unless you completely close the border which has a significant impact. And therefore, what is important is that we should not be complacent because of the border control or we should not just rely on the border control.
As a matter of fact, travelers from South Africa have entered the country right before the government imposed restrictions. More than two hundred fifty have arrived from South Africa between November fifteen to twenty nine who are all being closely monitored by the Bureau of Quarantine.
B O Q has started to locate these passengers. No positive case was reported on retest while the three foreign nationals from Region Six tested negative on R T P C R retest last December one. The three South African nationals who arrived in Negroes Occidental last November twenty five and twenty six are all fully vaccinated and are all currently asymptomatic. They are all undergoing quarantine in rented houses and have underwent re-swapping last December one with pending test results.
For Harry adds, one passenger each from South Africa, Burkina Faso and Egypt have tested positive for COVID. Their samples are currently being assessed if eligible for genome sequencing. Burkina Faso and Egypt are not part of the red list.
And to isolate Philippines uh rest of the world, the threat is there, but if we are prepared, we can be assured that we will be protected.
It still remains to be seen if Omicron causes more severe disease and if it drastically reduces a vaccine's efficacy. This is why vaccination remains important.
We know that the vaccines continue to be highly effective against protecting uh for protecting individual against severe disease, hospitalization, and death. And our focus should remain about should have to remain about um ensuring that individuals who are unvaccinated are protected uh from from these uh outcomes.
Both the D O H and the W H O say that the Philippines has learned so much from the recent Delta view search. Lessons which will spell the difference between properly managing or bowing down to Omicron once it enters the country. From double H O website, B B dot one dot one dot five two nine variant was first reported to W H O from South Africa on the twenty fourth of November two thousand twenty one. The epidemiological situation in South Africa has been characterized by three distinct peaks in reported cases, the latest of which was predominantly the Delta variant. In recent weeks, infections have increased steeply coinciding with the detection of B dot one dot one dot five two nine variant. The first known confirmed B dot one dot one dot five two nine infection was from a specimen collected on the ninth of November two thousand twenty one. Other facts unfolding. Vaccine makers from Pfizer and Modern are requesting two weeks to determine test efficacy against the Omicron variant. If found to be ineffective, will naturally need to reformulate. This was on November twenty sixth two thousand twenty one. This variant has a large number of mutations, some of which are concerning. Preliminary evidence suggests an increased risk of reinfection with this variant as compared to other V O Cs. The number of cases of this variant appears to be increasing in almost all provinces in South Africa. Current S A R S COVID two P C R diagnostics continue to detect this variant. Several labs have indicated that for one widely used P C R test, one of the three target genes is not detected called S gene dropout or S G target failure and this test can therefore be used as marker for this variant pending sequencing confirmation. Using this approach, this variant has been detected at faster rates than previous surges in infection, suggesting that this variant may have lag growth advantage.
Hello, yes.
A burning question is, does it reduce vaccine effectiveness because it has so many changes? Says Eris Kat Saurakis who studies virus evolution at the University of Oxford, U K. More says breakthrough infections have been reported in South Africa among people who have received any of the three kinds of vaccines induced there from Johnson and Johnson, Pfizer Bio and Tech and Oxford AstraZeneca. Two quarantine travelers in Hong Kong who have tested positive for the variant were vaccinated with the Pfizer jab according to news reports. One individual had traveled from South Africa, the other was infected during hotel quarantine. Researchers spotted B dot one dot one dot five two nine in genome sequencing data from Baswana. The variant stood out because it contains more than thirty changes to the spike protein, the S A R S COVID two protein that recognizes host cells and is the main target of the body's immune responses. Many of the changes have been found in variants such as Delta and Alpha and are linked to heightened infectivity and the ability to evade infection blocking antibodies. Source heavily mutated Omicron variants quote scientists on alert by you in Calway. Nature dot com updated November twenty seventh two thousand twenty one. News thus far, current S A R S COVID two P C R diagnostics continue to detect this variant. Several labs have indicated that for one widely used P C R test, one of the three target genes is not detected called S gene dropout or S G target failure and this test can therefore be used as marker for this variant pending sequencing confirmation. Using this approach, this variant has been detected at faster rates than previous surges in infection, suggesting that this variant may have lag growth advantage. Hence, it is faster to diagnose than a Delta variant. Using merely a P C R, one of the three target gene is not detected called the S gene dropout or S G target failure. Some undesirable news colon one. It is surmised that the O variant may be more infectious than the Delta derived from exponential growth of C O V I D nineteen cases in South Africa over the last seven eight weeks. Two anecdotal reports of breakthrough infections among the vaccinated. Three dot Omicron is said to be twice as infectious as Delta by Gabrielle Moss on Friday, December third two thousand twenty one. Reports of increased transmissibility and anecdotal reports of mild disease, mild symptoms and low hospitalization rates in Gondang province certain medical proponents have theorized that Omicron may now compete other variants like Delta and with increased transmissibility and mild symptoms may create a herd immunity which according to some experts would lead to the beginning to the end of the pandemic. Here a physician who is optimistic predicting the beginning of the end and end of the pandemic due to the emergence of the Omicron variant. There could be increased hospitalization, but that is the price we have to pay to achieve herd immunity and take us out of this pandemic. I think this is an irresponsible conclusion which W H O has discouraged. Herd immunity, also known as population immunity, is the indirect protection from an infectious disease that happens when a population is immune either through vaccination or immunity developed through previous infection. W H O supports achieving herd immunity through vaccination, not by allowing the disease to spread through any segment of the population as this would result in unnecessary cases and deaths source. Our own a virus disease, C O V I D nineteen. Herd immunity lockdown since C O V I D nineteen, the thirty first of December two thousand twenty.
W H O website, no. But given that most people were admitted for reasons other than COVID, it's reasonable to guess that at least a good few of these deaths were for non-COVID related reasons, but we simply don't know that yet. Um in fact, you would expect the majority to be non-COVID reasons, but but we we don't know, so we'll leave that there, but it's not. It it's still looking hopeful. It doesn't doesn't distract from the general feeling of hope that I have from this data. Um for the deaths in adults, yeah, twenty six thirty six, five five deaths in adults over sixty. One death was in a child whom the cause of death was unrelated to COVID. So so here we go. This is uh this is a really important point. Uh there's been no deaths reported in children from COVID so far in the St. Peter Hospital complex from Omicron in South Africa. Let's hope it stays that way. So far it's looking good. Um so the child tragically died, but it was some non-COVID related reasons. Uh there were no COVID related deaths among thirty four admissions in the pediatric COVID wards over the last two weeks, so brilliant, no children have died, that's good. Um Bhutan province as a whole. Now here we have the let me get rid of me and show you this graph because this really is a pretty amazing graph. So what we have here is the um these these are the previous wave, so we can see the uh the first wave, the cases went up and then with the delay, of course, the deaths went up. Second wave, cases went up, then with the delay, of course, the deaths went up. Third wave, the the line there is when vaccination started, so cases went up massively due to vaccination, even though the vaccination uh status in South Africa is not that good, not that high. Still, the deaths were nothing like us. Why now? The cases are going up. Cases are going up, but the deaths are way down. The deaths are way down at the moment. I'm I'm just gonna show you that on the blow up so far. So he- here we have it, uh the cases are going up now, but so far the deaths are going down. So it it really is so far so good in this in this South Africa situation. Of course, it could change, but there's no indication that it is going to change dramatically at this stage. So that that's the really reassuring graph, uh cases of Omicron going up even more than this is saying and the deaths which we know about, the the deaths are definitely definitely uh low, even though the cases are much higher than we are officially reported. So um nearly done for this data, level of care. Only two patients in the uh COVID I C U in the last fourteen days, so not many people needing high levels of care, neither of whom had a prior diagnosis of COVID pneumonia, so again, looking really good. Much shorter average length of stay uh on the Omicron fourth wave. So far, the average length of stay is two point eight days for Sars-CoV positive patients admitted to COVID wards over the last two weeks. Compared to, and look at this difference, this is spectacular, eight point five days for the past eighteen months. So the average for the first three waves is eight point five days of hospitalization and and the average for the Omicron wave so far is two point eight days of hospitalization. This is remarkably encouraging and I think that's probably about enough there, so um so far, this data from South Africa is very encouraging. We are seeing uh non-respiratory symptoms. Um we are seeing patients who are not most patients who are not requiring uh additional oxygen. Most patients are not oxygen dependent. The oxygen demand is way way lower than the previous waves. The patients are getting out of hospital quicker. The patients are um uh not requiring high levels of care and most of them picked up incidentally. So what this means is our initial hope that Omicron, while it's massively contagious and it's taking off in South Africa and will take off around the world, that is happening. Um but our hope was that because it's so good at a lot of the genetic variation is kind of used up as it were to make it more transmissible, there's less left for um for for making it more pathogenic and that is looking like it is, it is looking like it is the case, it's looking promising now. What this means is the Omicron variant will, I believe, spread all around the world. As people are exposed to it, they will generate uh immunity that is specific to the Omicron variant. It looks like people are going to have very minimal disease. Now, because there's so many, because there's gonna be so much Omicron everywhere, all at the same time over the next few months, that could mean that, of course, a proportion of people as we saw South Africa will be admitted to hospital. So there could be increased hospitalizations in the United States, in the U K, in Europe, Canada, Australia, everywhere over the next month too, but this should be within manageable levels. And the patients we are hoping are not going to be too sick and we would expect mortality, while it might not be absent, uh we would expect it to be much lower. But that would be the price that would be paid for massive herd immunity developing really quickly, which would essentially be the end of the pandemic. But there we go, that's the what the data is telling me at the moment, thank you.
My comment, although I am also optimistic with the apparent developments that the Omicron variant is mild and more transmissible, two key ingredients which may lead us out in this pandemic. However, we must have cautious optimism. There are more asymptomatics and mild cases with Omicron. They can spread the virus to unsuspecting persons with comorbidities which may reduce moderate to severe C O V I D nineteen. I again sternly warn that asymptomatics are never harmless. They are silent carriers which can spread the Omicron variants to unsuspecting high-risk individuals like the elderly over sixty five Y O, those with comorbidities like T M, immunocompromised individuals, lung disease, heart disease, and obese B M I greater than thirty. From C O V I D nineteen and comorbidities, deleterious impact on infected patients by Hassan Najas. At Al Journal of Infection in Public Health, December two thousand twenty, the S A R S COVID two infection becomes detrimental when it confronts a person with comorbidity and the management of these patients with appropriate medical care is an imperative step towards their survival. The comorbid individuals must undertake vigilance preventive measures to protect themselves during the pandemic. The S A R S COVID two infection becomes detrimental when it confronts a person with comorbidity and the management of these patients with appropriate medical care is an imperative step towards their survival. Updates, December fifth two thousand twenty one, are children more predisposed to Omicron? In Sekistu Malimaki, a public health specialist in the Gondang province that includes Chwan in the Vegas city, Chilhainisburg, told Reuters that out of the one thousand of patients in hospitals in the province, one hundred thirteen were under nine years old, a greater proportion than during previous waves of infection. We are comforted by clinicians' reports that the children have mild disease, she said in an interview, adding health officials and scientists were investigating what was driving increased admissions in younger ages and were hoping to provide more clarity within two weeks. Source S dot African official says children sit with C O V I D nineteen have mild infections by Alexander Winning this December fifth two thousand twenty one, Reuters dot com. Most preliminary reported symptoms were scratchy throat, although this report may seem reassuring. It may be prudent to have a cautious optimism. We must not be anxious, but we should never let our guard down. It is expected that there might be some immune escape from the efficacy of the vaccines, but there still may be some barrier of protection afforded by the existing vaccines. The most important protection for now as we wait another week for scientists and vaccine manufacturers like Pfizer and Modern to conduct their tests is to have strict adherence to minimum health standards, wearing face mask, social distancing, frequent hand washing and other measures, continue vaccination efforts. Updates, December eleventh two thousand twenty one, CDC chief Rachel Whalen Sky said the disease is mild in almost all of the cases seen so far with reported symptoms mainly cough, congestion, and fatigue. One person was hospitalized, but no deaths have been reported, C D C officials said. Source C D C chief says Omicron is mild as early data comes in on U S spread of variant The Guardian, December ninth two thousand twenty one. Likely that Omicron will outcompete the Delta. You can be infected by both Delta and Omicron. A co-infection is possible with the current doubling time of three to five days, at least fifty percent of C O V I D nineteen to be caused by Omicron by mid-December, confirmed today, December fourteenth two thousand twenty one. In the U K, one million by the end of December S G dropout September sixteenth U K. Omicron present at that time was Omicron more transmissible. According to Doctor John Campbell, it is more airborne and hovers around care for a longer time. November fourteenth two thousand twenty one, my theory on the decrease in the Delta variant C O V I D nineteen cases in the Philippines. The vast improvement of C O V I D nineteen cases was initially perplexing to me until I glanced upon Japan's seemingly similar drop of Delta cases which started almost parallel to that decline in the Philippines. In the Philippines, at the height of the Delta surge, on September twenty eighth two thousand twenty one, the new cases at thirteen, eight hundred thirty six positivity rate was twenty four point one percent. Cases persons tested was forty seven, four hundred thirty decreased exponentially on November ninth, one thousand four hundred and nine, five point four percent, thirty, seven hundred sixteen, and December eleventh, three hundred fifty six, one point one percent, and thirty five thousand five hundred twenty. One may conclude that decrease can be attributed to low testing, but upon in-depth analysis, the serial number of tests over several days, weeks, and months must eventually yield a cluster of samples yielding positive C O V I D nineteen patients must be apparent. It never happened. Few weeks ahead, Japan also experienced a similar low. The deaths decreased far more than Canada. Seventy, rising average of new cases followed by a drop and was maintained the vaccinations in Japan were high but not massively high and could not account for the sudden drop. My comment, Delta variants wave ends Delta variant, cell extinction, viral genetic mutations. Ichiro Yurinuwa, professor, National Institute of Genetics, Delta variant in Japan accumulated too many mutations. Viruses are correcting protein, N S P fourteen majority of N S P fourteen specimens in Japan seem to have undergone many genetic changes and mutation sites called A three nine four V non-structural protein made by the virus therefore errors accumulated leading to non-viability also more people in Asia have a defense enzyme called A P O B E C three eight that attacks R N A viruses, including the S A R S COVID two virus that causes C O V I D nineteen. When compared to people in Europe and Africa, National Institute of Genetics and U G A university research to discover how the A P O B E C three eight protein affects the N S P fourteen protein, A three nine four V discovered in twenty four other countries. S A R S ended abruptly in two thousand three working on a drug to inhibit N S P fourteen by opinion. It is possible that the the Delta virus in Japan and the Philippines, which are in close proximity geographically and migration may have Delta variants bearing genetic changes in mutation sites called A three nine four V. Filipinos and Japanese may have an innate defense enzyme A P O B E C three eight. Hence, the low numbers are real contrary to skeptics, just a theory. Omicron is here in the Philippines. Yes, D O H reports that two imported cases were positive for Omicron. Case number one in R O F who arrived from Japan on December first via Philippine Airlines flight number P R zero four two with mild symptoms cough and cold. The sample was collected on December fifth. Case number three other cases in Nigeria who arrived on November thirtieth two thousand twenty one via Oron Air with flight number W Y eight hundred forty three Q is asymptomatic. Derived from D O H attacks first two cases of Omicron variant by Matia Teresa Monte Mayor December fifteenth two thousand twenty one, Philippine news agency. My comment, with the arrival of Omicron, the Philippines must not panic for the majority of Filipinos. Omicron cases have been mild and asymptomatic for now. However, we must protect vulnerable population colon, those with comorbidities. The Omicron variant can infect both vaccinated and unvaccinated individuals. Continue vaccination protect us from Delta variant, so we must continue to practice minimum health standard. Continue vaccination which is proven for Delta variants. For fast screening diagnosis, look for S gene dropout failure, then do gene sequencing to confirm. Thanks for listening. Let us beat Omicron together. I can do all things through him, his strength as me. Philippines forward thirteen.
Thank you so much for Doctor Rich. Hey, do we open now po the floor for a Q and A? Hello, Doc Pow?
Yes, uh oh. Yes, uh we can open the floor. Are there any questions that?
Right now po, no one's chatting.
Yeah, let's just wait the note. I have a question. Uh in terms of the uh cases of Omicron, it ha- it's very transmissible, highly transmissible. And uh one of the speakers said. And, uh, one of the speakers said it's more airborne. So how can we actually prevent its transmission? Because it's more airborne.
After Doctor Rich types, I can read out po his, uh, answer.
Ventilation. Air filters, yes. So it is not advisable to lift the current um, alert level two, because, uh, if we lift that to alert level one, there will be more people allowed indoors. So this is not good for the, uh, increased transmissibility of Omicron.
Right.
Right? Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, would anybody else from the participants would like to ask a question? Feel free, po.
Yes, and in terms of the Red Cross, uh, guidelines, I think, uh, we still maintain our position of uh, work from home as much as possible and allow less than, or seventy percent at the most, um, occupancy in the office. Indi yung hundred percent, I think, that's the message, right, Doctor Rich?
Yeah.
Not the hundred percent.
So long as we pi equals practice social distancing with proper ventilation. So long as we pi equals practice social distancing with proper ventilation.
Okay, that is noted, po, Doc. About the chapters, po, would anybody like to ask anything? Especially that now we have, um, Odette, uh, landfill in our country and we're doing several operations and preparations where most of our volunteers are on site and on the ground. Um, are there any questions, confirmations of how we could stay safe, po, uh, from the chapters that are in the meeting?
Okay. So hindi pa rin pwede back to normal.
Hmm.
Yes, that's the advice. And even if you are vaccinated, they still see a number of, uh, persons getting COVID from the Omicron vir- variant. Even if they are vaccinated, right, Doctor Rich?
Yeah, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I think targets both vaccinated and unvaccinated. I think targets both vaccinated and unvaccinated.
Ayun, we tell before.
Yeah.
I think targets both vaccinated and unvaccinated. I think targets both vaccinated and unvaccinated.
Okay, actually, we have a question for him from our chat box, uh, I will read it out loud, po. Okay, so this is from Martin Gomez. He said, "On the R T P C R machines of the labs, any adjustments ba ang needed? Also, any data breakdown per variant for the Philippines?" So he has, uh, sorry, is it a he, si Martin? Um, two questions. One, 'yung R T P C R machines ba nung labs natin, kailangan ng any adjustments? In consideration of the Omicron variant? Second, uh, any data breakdown per variant for the Philippines? Yun po, Doctor Rich. For the others, po, freely chat lang your questions and then I will read them out loud. Thank you, Martin, for the questions, they are, ano, uh, great questions. Hi, Doc Rich, did you get the questions, po?
Hmm.
Okay. Okay, we'll just wait for your answer, po.
Hmm.
Okay, no problem.
Hello, ayun, isang question ni Martin Gomez about the the variations or about the distribution of the variant in the country, no? Uh, there are actually, hello, Bea?
Ye- yes, po, we can hear you, po. Yes, po.
Uh, actually, as of this time, nakaka-twenty thousand na ang tested ng Philippine Genome Center for, uh, various, uh, variants. And the predominant is still, uh, the Delta variant. About forty percent of those tested are Delta variant. And then, uh, parang alfa, beta, gamma, ang iba, no? And the Omicron is just two out of, uh, twenty thousand, so the first two cases. So predominantly circulating is still the Delta variant.
Uh, thank you so much, uh, Doc Pow. Um, for, for that, uh, info, no? Um, 'yung, uh, what's this? Uh, do, do, do we see an increase, um, uh, infection rate for the, uh, which is for the Omnicron, uh, uh, Omicron variant? Or, um, are we, you know, do, do we not have the data yet for that?
Yes, uh, the Omicron is highly transmissible. It is five times more transmissible than the Delta variant. So when we had the surge last September, it was due to the Delta variant. And we reached twenty-six thousand cases at its peak, ano? So if parang Omicron is five times, then we can surmise that it will be five times twenty-six thousand, ang highest possible cases, yeah. Eh, but they're saying that, uh, well, majority of the cases is actually mild and asymptomatic, no? So I don't know if, uh, our health system, actually, the problem is the health system can absorb that many cases. Kasi you don't know who among the cases that are detected as positive will go into severe COVID. Parang you have to treat all of them. Kung umabot ng one hundred thirty thousand yon in one day, you have to look at all one hundred thirty thousand cases. And the problem with the health system is baka merong severe na hindi nakayanin ng health system to, uh, parang look into.
Understood, po, ma'am. Thank you so much for the explanation, po.
Okay, yes.
Uh, may sinasabi po si Doc Rich na, uh, D O H should never use antigen that about to test only R T P C R because, uh, yun nga, there's a possibility that, um, hindi ma, ano?
Antibody test only P C R.
Yeah, hindi ma, what's this, hindi ma detect na maayos.
Yes.
Thank you, po.
Uh, we, we know even with the other variants, you know, the Delta, the Beta and the Alpha, the antigen test has a very high false negative. So it's the false negative that we are worried about because if it tests false negative in the antigen, then we interpret that as a true negative. Then kakalat, the virus will spread. But if the positive in the antigen is okay, because once they test positive, they are isolated, they are stopped from moving around. So that's why, uh, even D O H is actually warning the L G Us and the other sectors that are using antigen to, uh, use it with caution and not like treat a negative antigen test as a true negative, yun yung dapat. If the patient is symptomatic or has positive history of contact with a COVID positive, you still have to do confirmatory R T P C R for, for that. Kasi, um, Doc Rich, I think that D O H has allowed the use of antigen already. But they, they said the interpretation and the use should be, uh, by a registered physician or a licensed physician. Hindi siya pwedeng gamitin like anybody, 'yung parang home testing or you do a pregnancy test o- by yourself. It has to still be done and interpreted by a physician. Okay, yeah.
Hmm.
Hmm.
But thank you.
Body test has poor specificity around forty-one percent, specificity eighty percent.
Yes, thank you. Yes, antigen has, uh, poor. A sensitivity.
Hmm.
The antigen antibody test has porms and severity around forty-one percent, specificity eighty percent.
Okay. Yeah, sensitivity means that you are detecting the virus when it's present. So it's really very low, no? Sensitivity. So the false negative is actually fifty-nine percent. And specificity is, you, uh, when it's positive, it's really positive, no? So eighty percent of the time, it's really positive. Okay. Thank you, Doc Rich.
Hello, po, I actually have a question.
Yes, Bea.
Um, kasi we, uh, I come from a family with a lot of comorbidities, uh, like diabetes, po, and hypertension and stuff. Um, um, I want to know, po, if must, are we in more? Uh, sorry for the lack of a better term for are we more in danger ba now with the Omicron variant compared to the initial variants? Um, and if so, apart from the usual proper ventilation and the masks, what, um, other ways can we protect ourselves, po?
Yes, uh, at the onset day, uh, those with comorbidity are really more at risk. Whether you are vaccinated or not vaccinated because of the nature of the virus, it lowers further your immunity. And if you have comorbidity, uh, that's already, um, a sign to, excuse me?
Yes, po, kindly.
Yes po, kindly mute po yung iba. Thank you.
Uh oh. So if ah you have a comorbidity, you are more prone to complications than on. Rather than if you are healthy, you are able to fight the virus if it enters your body. So nah ah the the thing there is really to be more careful and if possible, you not get tested because that's the only way you can find out if your ah bubble or your family close contacts, no? Because we don't wear our mask at home. Kami hindi kami nagmamask at home, ano? Ah make sure that your close contacts at home are really ah virus-free. Okay?
Yes po.
No, oh. So you you need to get tested regularly in a household with comorbidities.
Okay po.
Yes, yes. Ah ayan meti nai see. Doctor Rich, Omicron is a mild variant, that's true. And I agree, comorbidities will render persons even with less virulent Omicron. Must be vaccinated, yes. Okay Bea?
Yes po, thank you so much for answering my question cause it's a problem in our house talaga right now. Especially po na I go to the office almost every day and yun nga po. Thank you po.
Okay.
Hey, does anybody else have a question that they would like to ask our speakers today?
I think we have ah participant from Abra. Pinakamalayo, you have any questions? Oo, from Abra. And then there's Baguio. May question ba kayo? Ah I have a question for Doc Rich. Oo, I am reminded by Baguio. It's a cold climate because we know in Europe where the virus and the Omicron variant is rampaging. And in the United States, it's ah temperature, it's cold weather um like increasing the viral transmission rate. Not really, not no result. Okay, so it's not really a factor. Okay. So the people in Baguio are not more at risk than anywhere else. Thank you, yes.
Ah we have representatives po from Rizal Chapter. Mamaria, hello. Ha may question kayo? And um also from Pasi, Molab meron po tayo. Would anybody like to ask a question po? So? Hi Mamaria.
I have a question for ah sir Doc Richard. So like with the threat of the Omicron var- variant, um what are your views or what do you think about the current um pilot test being made for face-to-face um ah face-to-face interaction among um our schools for in preparation for next year? Do you think those preparations are enough for the face-to-face learning to take place by next year?
Thank you Mamaria. Ah I give it a question po kasi di ba nga we have lowered our restrictions and we are slowly starting the face-to-face classes. So great question po.
Yes, ah Doc Rich. Yes. Yes, they they should Yes. I I was discussing this lunchtime with I R I F R C partners, no? And ah one of them is from India. And he said, once they opened up the schools in other countries, there was a surge in COVID cases. And that's because they don't test, no? Even if the kids and the faculty are fully vaccinated, testing should be an important ah intervention when opening up whether it's the school, it's a workplace, it's the ah ah tourist destinations, no? Ah testing is an important component of opening up the economy or opening up the public places. So ah it has been shown in the United States, like the University of Illinois, Martin, the like where we got our saliva tests, ah that it's really testing that is the cornerstone of ah stopping the spread of the virus in a bubble type of community like the school.
Well, completely agree ma'am, completely agree. Thank you.
You cannot do away with testing even if everybody is vaccinated because you can still get the virus even if you are vaccinated. And the problem with the children is that they go home. When they go home, they interact with older persons, with persons with comorbidities in the home that are at high risk. The children, which we learned from the lecture of Doctor Rich, no children has been recorded to have died of Omicron variant. So it's really very mild. But the problem is the older persons and those with comorbidities.
Yes, Doc Pow, I think that's where I'm getting at then kasi we ah most of the homes here in the Philippines are multi-generational as you always tell us, no? And I think with the pilot testing, this should be um an issue that they should look into.
Yes, yes. Correct. Yes. So that's our recommendation. Even ah pool pool testing, we're looking into pool testing where ah class of thirty students, for example, we do ah we use reagents for only three tests. Kasi you pull ah one vial, ten ten samples. Our lab can do that pool testing.
Did anyone notice in my lecture Japanese and Filipino and overcommit COV?
Over. Overcommit? Overcoming, yes. Ah just additional information from the Port Area Molecular Lab. The two cases that tested positive for Omicron did not come from our laboratory. Kasi for returning Filipinos and ah foreign nationals and OFWs, wala na tayong tine-test na OFWs because they have their own laboratory, yung first aid. And for returning Filipinos, we are only twenty percent or less of the testing. Eighty percent is now Detoxicare and PAD Lab. So yung mga nag-positive did not come from our laboratory. FYI.
Doc Pow, ano we there was a meeting earlier with ah O H P, no? So ah I think we're ano ah naggo-signal na si Greg of O H P na ano we're ano we're integrating with ah with with them. Ah so siguro mga ano yan, give it maybe maybe a week or so. Ah and Red Cross can ano can go back to do airport testing na.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Martin. That's good news, ano? Because ah we're not integrated into the One Health Pass. And that's the system that the Bureau of Quarantine has ah developed so that the entry of the data of the inbound passengers is only once. Pasok sila sa One Health Pass and then their data is now sent to the laboratories that will test them. So as of now, it's ah the Detoxicare and PAD Lab that's ah integrated with One Health Pass. So we're glad that the integration of Red Cross Laboratory is now in the works, oh.
Thank you po for all your support ma'am.
Thank you, thank you, Martin. Also, so yes, Doctor Rich? The ah last word, last word, ah the Filipino in overcoming COVID-nineteen by genetic modification.
Did anyone notice in my lecture Japanese and Filipino and overcoming C-O-V-nineteen by gene mic modification?
Yes. Okay Bea, thank you.
Yes po.
Oo. Are there comments on the Facebook Live?
I'm checking po right now.
Yeah.
Currently, we don't have any questions naman po on Facebook.
Anyway, ah Doctor Rich is also open for question and answers through Facebook chat. No? Ah yes, ah what is that nine AM to one PM, Monday to Friday, right Doctor Rich? So we'll we'll just send the link to our chapters and our molecular lab managers.
Yes po. And right now, yes po. Ah right now, I'm sending the link to the new Facebook page for ah handled by Doctor Rich sa chat box natin right now if anybody want to go and like it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you po everyone. Feel free po to ask anytime.
Thank you everyone. Take care. Bye-bye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you po. Merry Christmas po. Please stay safe.
Thank you, Doctor Rich. Yes, Merry Christmas. Thank you, doctor. Thank you. Thank you sa mga nag ah log-in from the molecular lab, yes.
Especially to those who asked po.
Sa Buanga, Baguio, Abra, Kagayan. Thank you.
We have from Benguet as well and Negros Oriental, Kagayan. Ingat po.
Ingat, ingat. Stay safe.
Thank you very much.
Merry Christmas.